It's at. It's six forty-nine P M. As a preliminary matter, this is Harry Kubetz, Chair of the Luenenberg Public Library Board of Trustees. After reading all of this, I will do a roll call to confirm all members and persons anticipated on the agenda or present can hear me. Good evening. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast over the Luenenberg Public Access Channel. And this meeting of the Luenenberg Public Library Board of Trustees is being conducted remotely. The town of Luenenberg, in response to COVID nineteen, is currently following the guidance from the Luenenberg Board of Health, Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and the C D C regard on the virus and steps communities can take to prevent the spread. The the order which you can find posted on the town website on the COVID nineteen Information Center page, access through the town manager's webpage allows public bodies to meet remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded. So the public can follow along with the deliberations of this meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment for this meeting of the Luenenberg Public Library Board of Trustees. It's being convened by Zoom as posted on the town website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference accordingly. Please be aware that other folk may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer unless you deliberately want to do it. Anything that you broadcast may be recaptured by the recording. We're now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. The chair will introduce each speaker on the agenda after they conclude their remarks. The chair will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called further. Please remember to meet your phone or computer when you're not speaking and remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in communication with other members, please do so through the chair taking care to identify yourself. For items with public comment, after members have spoken, the chair will afford public comment as follows. The chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the chair has a list of all public commentators, the chair will call upon each by name and afford three minutes for any comment. Finally, each vote in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. So I would like to go back and I'm going to be referring to members in alphabetical order. So when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative to let us know that you are here. Laura?
Here.
Bob?
Here.
Dick?
Here.
Kate?
Here.
Donna?
In the midst of joining.
Okay, we'll come back to Donna in a second. Maya?
Here.
Harry? Here. Muir?
I am here.
And Michael?
I'm here.
Okay, so Donna, are you on now?
She dropped off the list.
Okay, I'm sure she'll call me or she'll be back. So we're gonna assume that she's going to this meeting for the moment. Okay? We good with that?
Good enough.
Absolutely.
Okay, so first, do we have any public comment? Okay, with no public comment, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of December fifteen. And there's also minutes from January sixth. So we'll give a moment for people to first look through the December fifteen, please. Hey, Bob, as always, great job on the minutes. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Are people still reading?
No.
Okay. Are there any amendments to the meeting, to the minutes?
Don't say anything.
Well, this will be a first.
I do have one. Sorry. The third bullet point from the bottom of the director's report. Early literacy stations, the second sentence I would clarify, there are now two stations each for ages two to seven and ages seven to twelve.
Okay, there are few stations. There are two stations for ages seven, two to seven and seven to twelve?
Yeah.
Okay.
Two for, to, to each for the two age groups.
Oh, two stations for each age group?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are there any other comments for those minutes? So may I please have a motion to accept those minutes as amended?
This is Dick. I made the motion to accept the minutes as amended?
Second?
Okay. Did, did, sorry, Bob, did you hear her seconded that?
Uh, no, I didn't. It's Laura. Oh, okay, Laura, thank you.
So Dick and then Laura. So roll call to accept the minutes as amended. Laura?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Donna? Maya?
Yes.
Harry? Um, so you, I guess we have to note at this point that Donna did not vote, but otherwise this is unanimous approval. So we also have the minutes from January.
Donna is waving, but.
I'm sorry?
Donna's muted.
I'm, I'm sorry, Dick?
He's muted. Donna was waving, but she's muted. So she has to, she has to find the unmute.
Muir can unmute her.
Give Donna her a voice. He's still muted.
All I can do is ask her to unmute.
Okay. Donna, you can hear that, right? You're muted. You have to unmute yourself.
Doubt, doubt. If you scroll all the way down to the bottom of the screen, Donna, there should be an unmute button. No. Okay.
Donna, if you call my, if you call my cell, I'll add your video, your audio in if you want. Okay? Um.
Zoom, we.
So.
Zoom party we took it.
We have the January sixth minutes and the only people that really should comment. Sorry. Hey, Donna?
I can't. The screen, it went away.
Okay, we are now in.
Harry?
Yeah.
I don't have any minutes for January sixth.
They are, they actually, they're on the in, in Google Drive.
Okay, they must have, I, I got the documents earlier today and I don't think they were there then.
Uh, no, I put them in mid-afternoon.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, sorry about that. But, um, so Donna? Sorry. So, so I'm gonna, uh, it's, I'm gonna mute. No, I'm not gonna mute. I can't do that. Okay, so, uh, so Donna, Laura, and and I are the ones that can vote on these.
It looks good to me.
Okay. Uh, so any comments on these? So I'm gonna do a roll call on accepting these minutes as presented. Donna?
Got it, finally. Got it, finally. Your, the whole screen had disappeared in the Zoom meeting. It went back to ads for Zoom.
Okay, so I've now killed you off my phone. Okay, so Donna said yes. Laura?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so, um, I, I think I did a vote before the motion to, did we, we didn't do the motion, right?
I make a motion to accept the minutes.
Okay.
I seconded.
Okay, and we voted on it, so it's unanimous. Thank you. Um, okay, big boss, you're on.
Oh, Harry.
Right.
Yes. Yes.
So I can just get that document from Google Docs and submit it as is?
Exactly. Okay. And, and it's, it's in Word form, so you can just, you know, convert it.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you. And if you need me to send it to you directly, I will.
No, I can, I can get it there.
Okay. Um, so big boss, your big report.
Yes.
Um, Harry, I'm sorry, one more thing. Can you say again who made that motion the, for the January sixth minutes?
I made the motion.
And then, and then, and then Donna, no, sorry.
I did. Laura.
Laura. So Laura. The motion by Dick.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Oh, my gosh. Okay, big boss.
You, you think we never did this before?
Did you say that this was a Zoom meeting?
Yeah.
All right, my report. Let's start FY twenty-two budget. January is the seventh month, so approximately fifty-eight percent of the year completed. You can see salaries about on schedule. Other expenses continue to catch up to where we should be and where we will end up. No real major issues here. No real highlights either. I mean, it's, it's business as usual. The heating, heating is still surprisingly low. Uh, I know that in the last week or so, I've submitted at least two invoices for that that were both pretty big. So that should probably catch us up to close to where we would expect to be.
Yeah. I just have to say, and this is so typical me, I happen to have been probably in the last month at the library when there were two or three meetings taking place in the Savonik Conference Room.
Sure.
Not, I, I don't know what, what groups were there. But it's always so frustrating to me that it's cold. I can hear the heating system on.
It's right there.
And, and they have the windows open because it's so darn hot in that room.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, the, the community where it's, if we look, if we were to look at the design drawings, I think we could probably fairly easily see some of the issues with the heating or HVAC ducts connecting to that area, but it is frustrating. The community room is, is also usually quite different in temperature from, from the rest of the library as well. Depending on the time of year, hot or cold.
I just think it speaks so poorly of our energy use when we've got windows open and heat on.
I agree.
Okay, thanks.
We'll see, we'll see what we can do. Any questions on the FY twenty-two budget? I we, FY twenty-three budget then. Since our last meeting, we did receive the target budget from the town manager. And we, the met January sixth, and we just went over the minutes for the subcommittee meeting to discuss the budget request that we submitted then on January twelfth. Um, and don't have a meeting scheduled yet with her, but we'll be meeting, I will be meeting with the town manager the next couple of weeks to discuss those requests. Also, an informal meeting with the head of the finance committee next week to talk about same, same things before my presentation to the finance committee as a whole in February. I think it's the twenty-fourth. So yep, we, we, let me pull up my document and I can tell you exactly what we requested. We did, I corrected the library director salary. We did request funding for two new library assistant positions so that we could open on Friday. We also requested.
Muir, do you think we can see that? Because we're not seeing that.
Sure, let me, do you want to see it? I can show you.
I, I don't know. I thought you were going to get it. Sorry.
Yep, yep, yep. Let me do that. That way you can look, make, make it easy. All right, so here it is. Corrected. Let me make it a little bigger. How's that? Can you guys see that? Well? Okay. Corrected the direct library director's salary so that it reflects the contract amount. Fourth line down is funding for two library assistant positions that would be additions to the staff so that we can open for additional hours on Fridays. We also requested it's about nine, a nine percent increase approximately for our two utility line, two big utility lines, the heating and the electricity that would reflect an anticipated increase in cost of running the facility for additional hours. In the winter, we keep we keep the library warmer, so. And summer cooler and then increased electricity use during those, those hours. Requested additional money in the programs line so that we could continue to support that core service, continue to switch over some of the operational costs of the library from sources like the Friends of the Library to our municipally appropriated funding. Requested the full membership assessment for the CW Mars network. This year, we are in the midst of the transition from what had been called the mini, mini net member to a full member of the network, which comes with an an increase in membership fee. So I think the transition is happening over three fiscal years. So this, this would be for the second year of transition. So we would see another increase the next year as well. We have never paid, I don't think ever, the full membership assessment for CW Mars through the municipal, municipally appropriated budget, but the request is for the full amount.
Merrick, can I ask you a quick question on that?
Absolutely.
Is that just having to do with numbers of residents? No, nothing to do with services, correct?
So the membership, the membership fee is one piece of the membership assessment. Uh, the membership fee is the amount that is increasing from two thousand four hundred dollars, I think, to eight thousand dollars for the full membership fee. That's a portion of that membership assessment. That's what's increasing. There are also components to the membership fee that include usage. So electronic ebook and e-audio book usage, the number of circulations, physical circulations in a library also impact pieces of the assessment because CW Mars as an organization manages some of the administrative tasks that go into that. They manage the overdrive membership and, and other things as well. Our fiber, fiber connection through which most of our computers in the, the library connect to the internet is also part of that membership assessment. And then there are a couple other small pieces. There are also small libraries in network grant from the state is a discount that goes into the membership fee, membership assessment helps take care of some of that cost. And then E-rate discounts, which have changed recently as well drastically to help decrease the cost of that fiber connection are also part of that assessment. Hopefully, that's a good summary that doesn't create additional questions, but
thank you.
Good, absolutely. My pleasure. The next above target request that we made was for library materials. This those expenses are, need to be sixteen percent of the total municipally appropriated amount each fiscal year. So we need to spend sixteen percent of our budget on what things that qualify as library materials. So this budget line combined with the book service line together should roughly come out as sixteen percent of the total budget. So that is as part of why we requested an above target amount there. Increased costs as well as increased usages of materials like ebooks, which have a higher cost than physical, physical items goes into that as well. And then the last request we made was for some additional funding specifically for technology with the switch over into, with the new acting IT director. We've, we've started some discussions about some of the emergent needs of the libraries technology and also the need for an ongoing tech, technology plan to cover the right kind of routine replacement of technology as it ages. So that's, that's, that's the reasoning behind that request, I think. We, we generally fund those purchases for technology, both that routine replacement and some of the, well, I mean, a lot of the really special things that happen at the library, for instance, the beam system that we looked at last meeting through more volatile funding sources of the state aid is not necessarily volatile, but it does change every year and it could go towards any number of things. So switching over some of that purchasing that would typically come from state aid money to our operational budget for operational needs is, is kind of meets some of the the ongoing priorities that we've discussed. But the Friends are the other, one of the other sources for, for those typical. Typically, we fund some technology purchases with the Friends and this past year is a really good example. They spent twelve thousand and change on technology for us with the beam system and the the two new early literacies, or they're not, they're actually literacy stations. They're not so much really literacy. So yeah, there's our FY twenty-three budget update. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I have some questions.
All right, there we go. Michael Ray.
Would you mind? Yeah, would you mind putting the budget back up?
Sure. Yep, yep, yep. There you go.
Yep. So when, first, I've identified three questions. First one is, when you look at your that, that purchase of technology, have you conducted an inventory to specifically identify what you're going to be buying with that?
Um.
Or, or what equipment you're replacing?
Sure. I think that we have we, we have an inventory. We have a very brief technology plan for replacing things that kind of describes our, our basic you know, periods of replacement for public access computers, for staff computers, that type of thing. Really, the three top priorities for the library are the, the phone system, the server, and the public access computers. And so I would anticipate some negotiation with the IT department as far as what they might be able to pay for and what that would leave the library department to pay for as well, you know, on top of that. Those three needs are really kind of bordering on emergency. The phone system is still working, but we, we don't have access to it to make repairs. So that's something that Dan needs and, and it's been there's no way for him to do that without basically starting from scratch. The server, we had a scare two summers ago, I think everybody remembers that, that put us out of, you know, without access to our documents and that we actually had to restore from an old version. So we lost a couple of months of changes. That's again, you know, the server is ancient and although we have backups in place and a good backup system, that, that's a really top need as well. The server is also part of the public access system. It runs our thin clients, which right now are about half of our public access stations, which I think the number is twenty-three. Half of those station, about half are thin clients that need to be replaced. So, you know, I think probably any one of those needs would be taken care of with that eight thousand dollars, but it wouldn't do more than one.
All right.
Does that, does that, is that a good answer for, for now?
I, I I think that your answer in the future will need to be more specific with exactly what pieces you're looking to replace. I don't, I mean, you, you're not going to be able to replace your phone system and upgrade your servers for eight thousand dollars. You're not going to be close to that. So I think it would be, you're going to have to probably spell that out in a little more detail for those items. And then next question is, when you were discussing the sixteen percent for library materials, why would this not be part of that?
Technology?
Yes.
Um. The, hold on one second. Um, just pull up MBLC. See if I can pull, pull the exact language for you. So this is the sixteen percent requirement is mandated by the MBLC. See if I can find the right spot here. Uh, see if I can find the right spot here. Uh, I'm, I'm not finding the exact language quickly here, um, library materials basically are materials that are going towards. The circulating collection of the library, um, so it's, you know, books are, are an easy example. But it also, those librarian materials expenditures include. Expenditures for the materials to keep up the collection as well, so when we have to reba- uh, not rebind, but recover. Uh, books, the, the book covers that we have to pay for, the book tape, um, that you have to pay for, those will be included in library materials expenditures. But things like uh technology for staff are not included. Uh, technology for the public, I don't think are, are included either.
Okay. All right. I, I understand, I think that, um, that you, you're probably going to get that question another time. Um, in another setting.
Yep.
The, um, the usually the impact of adding an additional business day. Uh, results in a ten to fifteen percent increase on your utilities at a minimum. How did you arrive at a nine percent number? For your utility increase?
I, so what I, the, the calculation that I did was. The number of open hours. That we were increasing, which was eleven point four percent, if we were open four hours on Friday, which is a half day. Um, so it'd be like a Saturday is a half day for us. That's an eleven per- point four percent increase in open hours, and I just kind of slightly under. Uh, estimated the utilities um for. That, so eleven percent. Increase uh in hours, it's, and I'm assuming that the. We wouldn't see a one-to-one increase. In utilities uh for. Cause we keep the, the building at a minimum temperature when it's, it's set in its unoccupied, you know, settings, um, so, but it's. But it's still heating the building, so. It felt like a conservative estimate.
Okay, what, what is, uh, what is the temperature you guys normally drop it down to on Fridays? When no one's there?
I think it's in the fifties.
Okay. So what you're, so what you're figuring is what that by being open for, for more hours. The formula you applied was basically looking at your total operational hours and increasing that by.
Yeah. Yep, exactly.
All right.
If you have that, if you have a better calculation, I'd, I'd love, love to know.
I do, but, uh, but we can talk about that, I think. Okay, thank you.
Okay, was that, and you had a third question, I believe?
That was the, that was the third.
That was the third one, okay, great.
Thank you.
Thanks for the questions. All right. Okay, okay. So let's go back to. My. Report. All right, so we're back. I do have a couple um additions since I wrote the report to the staff, uh, staff update. And I guess, um. Uh, the, so the best place to start would be one of those, uh, which is the director's contract. So we've, we've got a bit of a story, uh, so bear with me as I, as I try and get through as, as we need to. Initially, the. The, the board voted to. Uh, offer a three-year contract. And wanting the. The, uh, the salary rate to be effective January first, which would be the, the next month. Basically after, after the meeting where this happened, um, the contract was written up. But on calendar year. And. It's um more conducive to the bookkeeping, I think. Uh, to have contracts on fiscal year, that's the preference, I believe, for the town, um, so. After the first draft of the contract was uh submitted, uh, we, Harry. Uh, met with town manager and the HR director slash assistant town manager. Um, and discuss things and ended up. Coming to the understanding that. Redrafting the contract to start July first, twenty twenty-two. And go for three years after that, uh, with uh the contracted amounts. For salary, uh, matching fiscal years, uh, would be best, uh, and. Wanting to include the pay raise. As of January first, a one-time payment was suggested uh to match the difference. So, uh. We did some calculations, the amount uh that would reflect that difference. Uh, for January first through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two. Ends up being an amount of two thousand two hundred fifty-eight dollars and not, and fifty, ninety-seven cents, sorry, ninety-seven cents. So that is based on the number of days uh in. Those two uh halves of the year, uh, from Ja- July first, twenty twenty-one to. To December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, there are one hundred and thirty-two pay, paid days of work for the director. From January first, twenty twenty-two to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, there are one hundred and twenty-nine paid days. So it's slightly less than half of, half of the raise, um, if that makes sense. So that ends up being a difference of two thousand two hundred fifty-eight and ninety-seven cents, uh, so. To authorize that payment, the board should vote. To make that payment, and then the director will. Uh, submit a voucher to the payroll department, um, and I'll take care of that, the. That revised fiscal year contract. Was submitted to the town. Two weeks ago, I believe, uh, executed right before that and, uh. Given to the HR director. At that point, and I think that catches us up on contract.
Yeah, before you go on.
Okay.
So, uh, Mr. Motion, can, uh, can we please, um, have a motion? To approve the uh one-time payment amount that you were talking about. Because, uh, he needs to be able to report back to payroll and HR and town manager. That the board has voted and approved that, just for the board's purposes. That the, the money is in accordance with what we agreed upon, i- it's happening at the time that it agreed upon. Um, but it is, uh, just, the contract actually is not now starting until. Uh, July first, so this is a one-time payment to bridge that gap, so Dick, can you make that motion, please?
I'm, I make the motion that the board approve the sum of, you were putting the number.
Twenty-two fifty-eight ninety-seven.
Exactly, to, to, uh. Complete the, the contract negotiations with the director.
Second.
Could somebody please second that?
I second it.
Okay, we're going to do a roll call, Laura.
Yes.
Bob.
Yes.
Dick.
Yes.
Kate.
Yes.
Donna.
Yes.
Uh, Maya.
Yes.
Very, yeah, so unanimously approved, Muir, if you need something, uh, in terms of. Uh, minutes or whatever, Bob can provide those to you. Or, uh, as far as I'm concerned, you can just represent that we voted and, uh, it will be in our minutes.
Very good. I ask a question, Muir?
Yes.
Um, I just want to make sure I understand this correctly, um, so the twenty-two fifty-eight is a one-time payment. To cover the first six months of twenty twenty-two. Because they pushed your contract start date out six months, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Yes.
Okay, I just, I just want to make sure I understood that correctly.
Yep, exactly.
Okay.
Got it.
Um, okay, thank you, Muir, for doing that.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Another update, um, we discussed last month. Our collection policy, collection development policy, which includes the. The challenge of a book and procedure uh involved there, uh, and we did have. As I, as I, we joked about that last meeting, but I think the next day. Lars, the next day we were open, Lars did come. To talk with me about the book, uh, and follow up on his, um, concern. And, uh, so, what was the name of that book anyways?
Wait, it was hookers and blow.
Yeah, hookers and blow save Christmas, exactly. And, uh, so he, he voiced a more uh stringent, more uh direct. Resistance to the library keeping the book, um, after, I think it was after the, after our last meeting. And so I ended up. Talking with him about that for a while. And really, as, you know, I think what I said at our last meeting was if I wasn't able to talk somebody out of. Wanting to pursue the removal of a book from the collection, I failed. Uh, and I have to report that I failed at that point, uh, to talk him out of, uh, wanting to pursue that. Um, so what I ended up, you know, talking with him for a couple of hours, very amicably, um, you know, he, he and I have, uh. A good deal of respect for each other, and, and that was apparent from the conversation, uh, but we couldn't agree, um, and. Uh, you know, at that point, I still had not looked at the book, um, hadn't talked to, uh, the selector who had selected it for the collection about the book. And so, uh, we. I gave him the challenge form, um, in case he wanted to fill it out. Um, and went about following the rest of the procedure, which I included discussing it with, um, the selector. And, uh. Eventually, what we. She also, I don't think, had looked at the book at that point. Beyond the reviews that, that she had looked at when she had selected it, um, cause it, it very quickly had been checked out, um, and. So we, we both decided to continue to research and look into it. Um, and by the time that Harry, uh, and Bob were giving me my evaluation. Um, the selector had come back and.
Hang on, he, he sent an aggressive email. About it.
Lars.
Yes, he sent an aggressive email.
To you.
He, he was not going to pursue and come to the next board meeting. But he was very disappointed with the library's inability to make. Good decisions and that the library was just trying to be too politically correct. And he hoped that all of the, uh, I guess, employees of the library and trustees would be taking out the book and reading it to their. Children and grandchildren to give them the, whatever, that whatever, uh. Inappropriate information or whatever that Lars thought that, that book represented.
So, and a curiosity, what book are you guys talking about?
It, it's a children's picture book that's called hookers and blow save Christmas, about a tow truck hookers and his friend. Um, uh, blow the snow blower, uh, who saved the Christmas party.
Got it.
So it just so happens that the person who selected the book, when Bob and I were there in the library, speaking with Muir. Came after having, and this is after we received the email from Lars. Uh, that person came in and said, you know what, it was a mistake for me to order this. Upon research, no other library has ordered this book. So, given the fact that the selector thought that it was wrong. And we were dealing with somebody who voiced a pretty aggressive opinion on it. Um, we reached the decision at that point that the, that that book could in fact be removed from the collection. And I responded to Lars and thanked him for his input, let him know that, uh. The decision was made to withdraw that book from the collection and that we appreciated his input.
Good, good summary, I think that's. That was the end of the story. Yes, Bob.
Uh, did you ever get any comment from anybody that checked that book out?
Nope.
Okay.
Did that complaining individual read the book? Did Lars read that book? I have an issue with. Because.
Well, I mean, that, so.
The book is not inappropriate, the, the title is tongue-in-cheek and. Uh, yeah, it's, it's a kid's book, it's, it's about two trucks saving Christmas. It's.
It's a, it's a really, I think it's a good illustration for us of, of what hap- what often happens when, when books are challenged at libraries. And, uh. He, he, he saw the title in the wow brewery subscription, in the, the, the digest of, of new books. That were added to the collection. So it, you know, I think it, sometimes they include it, there's a, a cover picture included. Uh, but really, it's, it's mostly just the title and a description of what the book is about, um, and a list of what's been added recently. Um, and so he saw it and, and sent me a message and I acknowledged it, um, and, you know, he held on to, uh, the. The impression that he had of, of the material, um, and, and that's what spurred him to, to follow up. And, uh. You know, part of, part of, part of the po- policy that we have, that we went over at the last meeting. You know, includes the, the challenge form, which on, on that form, there's a question, did you read? The material that you're challenging, and, and oftentimes people who are challenging material have not read the material yet. So, I mean, it's, it's really interesting, um, phenomena, um, and, and kind of, kind of cool that, that we experienced it. You know, here, so that we kind of all have hands-on, you know, knowledge of, of what, what can happen.
This is, this is Dick, and in fairness. There was only one copy, the copy was out, okay, and very often we do. In fact, judge a book by its cover, or in this case, judge a book by its title, and although. The author might have meant it to be tongue-in-cheek. Or whatever, uh, the, the title itself. Is what people are going to judge the book by to start with, and. Uh, you know, I looked at all of these, and there is an array. Of children's quote-unquote books with titles that I would not want. In my grandchildren's possession, you know, regardless of what the content of the book is. If we're dealing with reindeer poop and other sorts of things that are supposedly children's books, and they're being written for children. But they're being written for children with the idea that adults are going to read them, and adults are going to get the double entendres, but children won't. Well, that same book that's in the house for the four-year-old that isn't going to get the double entendre. The parent may very well have to explain that book to the nine-year-old who's going, hey, what's going on here? And I'm not sure that the library really needs to be providing those books to the public. If they're there, they're fine, they're available, they can go on Amazon and purchase them, but. You know, there, there is some sort of a fine line there where we're not necessarily. Censoring, but we're also not necessarily needing to provide. Everything for everybody, for everybody's taste. One person's opinion from a grandfather.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, it's, it, it is an impossible task to provide every, everyone. Everything that they might be looking for, and so there is some. With the el- with the library, although we do try to provide. With the el- with the library, although we do try to provide access to, to things, uh resources that, that, that people are looking for, there is a, an element of selection. Um and so um that, that, that's a process, that's part of the reason why we have. Training requirements and education requirements for, for the employees that are, are tasked with those responsibilities of picking what books go into. The collection. Not always easy, yeah, go ahead, Maya.
Um, no, I guess, I guess I will just leave it with a comment that um. I, I'm not, you know, obviously too upset that hookers and blow save Christmas was removed from our collection. Um, the book itself, I mean, obviously, we know the issues, but what I, what I am concerned about. Is that we need to be really cautious setting the precedent that. One citizen, one member can walk in, and even though they go through the process, they have read the book and they. They can put in to play a set of. A, a set of circumstances where a book is removed from the collection. With only one person having. Um voiced an issue, that's my, that's the only comment I would make, and again, I mean, we know it's an impossible task, but. You know, Lars is one person. And this is a. You know, this is a large community, so that's the only thing is I just, I worry about precedents when we're removing books from circulation that. You know, when, you know, the, the complaint is. The title of the book, do you know what I mean? Does that, does that make sense?
I think that's an excellent point, um you know, part of, part of the, the balancing act. Um when it comes to certain types of material, and there's, there's a wide range of, of what. You know, subject matter you might be included in, um in this, it's not just. Not just children's books, um it, you know, you could include, you know, um. Fi- fiction for teens um that include perspectives uh of. Non-normative sexual orientation, uh we can include things like Mein Kampf, uh which is, you know, an autobiography. Uh of uh. One of the twentieth century's most notorious individuals um and. You, the, all of those, all sorts of things might be objectionable to certain people, certain individuals. Um and, you know, part of the, the mission of the library is to provide access to information so that. Individuals can choose what they expose themselves to um and, you know, uh so. Someone who is right for radicalization uh might come across a mater- it's material. Like Mein Kampf and, and. Take it somewhere, um somewhere bad. And, and someone else might read it to learn about how we can, you know, avoid uh things. Uh in the future, based on what's happened in the past, um and, and the library's role is not to decide. Whether people can a- have access to it or not, it's to provide the access that people want. Um, even then, we can't provide access to everything that people want. Um and we also have to make the, the choice of how best to utilize the limited resources we have to. Provide a, a, a collection of resources to the community that can, you know, best be put to use for the. You know, for the benefit of that community, you know, there's, you know, the additional complication of children. Um where, you know, parents, I think we all can agree have the, the right to decide what their children are exposed to. Um and so that's where parents want their children not to have access to things. The library can't necessarily step in and say, okay, yeah, you're right, and no one else can have access to, to that either. Um and, you know, certainly, I think. Um, most parents might agree on most things, but not all parents are going to agree on all things, so that there, it's, it's. Yeah, I, I digressed far enough, but I think we all understand that how complicated it is. Um and I think the, the, the point to reiterate after, after Maya. Uh Maya's point is, is that our main, one of our really core. Goals and objectives is to provide access to things that people need and want um in who, those. Those people who are living in Lunenburg um and, and in the area. Uh so that they can have access to those things, so to learn, to educate themselves, to grow, uh to entertain themselves as well. And, and, and that's a big part of why we're here, um so. Let's move on.
I have a question.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Um, didn't the policy say that the board is supposed to decide?
On. Yeah, well, there's a, there's a seven-step process. Um and, you know, the first, the first thing that happens is someone voices a, a, a concern. Um and, and the, at that point, that concern gets directed to the d- library director. Um and the initial contact is, is a conversation between the director and the person voicing the concern. Um and. I think the hope is that. All concerns would be taken care of at that point, um as there's a discussion of how libraries work, what, you know, the mission of the library is, et cetera. Um but if it's not, the next step is for the, the complainant to fill out the, um the form. The written form, uh that has a bunch of questions about, you know, the situation, um and submit it to the director. Um who will bring it to the board, um the director at the same time would be doing research, uh bringing in. Reviews and, and, you know, professional uh. Professional perspective on, on the materials of, as, as it's possible. And that would end up, uh if things are pursued down that, that avenue, end up at a, a. Uh, of the next regular board meeting, um where it would be an agenda item, um there would be discussion. Um and uh. You know. Yeah, hopefully, decisions. There's. There is included in the policy, the potential that there would still be objections after the initial discussion. Um and things could take up to three board meetings to fully resolve based on the policy. Yes, the, but I think the answer is, is yes, if things go that far, the board does get involved. And in this case, the, it didn't go that far.
I guess.
Between, between the, the conversation that Lars and I had and uh when we would have met, which would have been tonight. Um, he decided he didn't want to uh pursue. Uh, you know, the, the concern any further, and that's to announce that, that's when he sent the e- email that, that Harry described.
So then after the email, you, you decided to take it out of the collection?
Uh, so, I'm sorry, I, I need to take the heat on this, but Laura, you're correct, the, the concept of the uh. Of the process is that it comes to the board. Um, it just so happens that. I was in the library, Bob happened to be in the library at the same time. Um, I, I guess my opinion was that this particular. Item which was causing. Some, some real consternation, um but I, I, I didn't think that this book was. And, and I'll, I'll, again, this, I'm, I'm going to take the heat because this was my decision, I, I didn't think that this book was really. Particularly consequential, the person who ordered it and who wanted us to have it. Came into the room, I don't think that was prompted, I think it was coincidental and said. You know what, it was a mistake to have ordered this book, you know, we're the only library. Um, I guess in the, in the, whatever system she was referring to, um that has ordered this book. Um, so given that the person who ordered it was saying it was a mistake, I'd like to withdraw it. The fact that we had a pretty prominent person objecting and the fact that. It was not really an, an education issue, I don't think it wasn't a, a perspective on. Natural selection and, and, and things like that, it, it just did not seem. Uh to be worth pursuing, the last thing is that um my own little research of. Uh this book and other books written by the author is that the author knew that. I- i- it was going to be uh somewhat tongue-in-cheek and controversial. And um because other books written by the same author, if I'm not mistaken, one of them was like. Benny's Big Balls or no Benny's Big Nuts, um or, or something like that.
It was, it was D's Big Nuts.
I'm sorry?
D's Big Nuts?
So anyway, guys, I, I. Inappropriately or inappropriately, I, I short-circuited. Wrote back to, to try to end the fury of this person. Um, so if, if it was wrong, I did it wrong.
I, I think, I think, you know, it's, it's, it's good to. Highlight that. You know, the selector, the person who's responsible for making the, the choice in the first place. Had gone and looked more closely at the materials and, you know. More importantly than someone objecting to it. Uh, that person's knowledge of. The community, um the, the needs and desires of, you know, the, the residents who. Utilize the resources of the children's room. It, it didn't feel like a good fit for the collection for the town. And I think that, you know, it doesn't happen very often, but, you know, sometimes it's, it, it is very difficult. Um to not have looked at. Every book that you buy um for the, a library, um typically, we're buying. Somewhere between fifty and a hundred and fifty books a month uh for any particular collection in, in the building, and so. A selector doesn't and, and can't read everything that they're purchasing. And what selectors do, and, and I'm one of the selectors for the library, um we. Read the, the professional literature, um which for librarians are book reviews. Um, written generally by other librarians. Who have access to. Or early, early, not um versions, but early, uh released early. Materials, um their, their read, advanced reading copies typically. Um and, and librarians write reviews of materials for other librarians to help them pick. Uh appropriate books and, and other resources for, for library collections, um and uh so it's, it's. An interesting remove to be operating on, uh but it is easy enough to be mistake. Uh, uh, something that might be almost appropriate or might be enjoyed by some people somewhere. Uh but maybe not our specific community, um and so a big part of the reason that. I would say the biggest part of the, the, the removal of the book is not because someone objected to it, it's because. The selector, you know, looked at it again and thought, well, maybe this isn't the right title for us. And Harry just happened to, to be there and, and take the point on communicating that, um so. Does that clarify it all? Okay. And, and I, you know, I think. I, as the director. Part of the reason that I had a conversation with Lars about the materials. Before e- even looking at it myself, um is because I have so much trust for the selectors that I, I have. Working here in Lunenburg, um they do an excellent job, um and. Uh, you know, I trust them to be making good decisions and even, even a mistake like this one. Um is not going to shake that, the trust that I have for them, um they do an excellent job, they. Know Lunenburg very well, and, and I think that that is, you know, the, the biggest part of. You know, the success we see when it comes to the collection, um it, it comes from the expertise. Uh of our selectors, uh when it comes to, to people in town, so. Yeah, an interesting, an interesting uh situation, for sure. Let's see, two of my additions down now, uh the next is our trust fund legislation. Um which it continues to be imminent, um it's, I believe, before the Senate now, which means it's about to. You know, uh about to happen, I think, um but uh kind of still at the same stage. Heather, town manager, gave us an update, I guess it was this afternoon, right, Harry? Just now, so uh it's still imminent and hopefully it'll happen soon. All right, so I'll get back to what I have written and I'll save my fourth edition for the last bit of my report. We are currently working on LSTA grants as anticipated February is going to be a deadline for a draft. Um and then the final application deadline is going to be in April. We did have another interview for our digital services position, um it was the best one we've had yet. Uh I am hoping we'll have another, I, we, we do have another scheduled, um I believe it's Monday. Um to talk with another candidate, and I'm hoping we'll ha- have um reason to invite at least one of those two interviewees back for a second interview. Um which is, is great tantamount to possibly offering them the job.
I have a question.
Yes, Laura.
Um, and last meeting, I think it was, we had said maybe they should um lower the expectations of the applicant. Is, are you working under new requirements or the old ones? For these two applicants?
We didn't revise the description, these are, these were both can, um applicants who uh had applied. Uh before any revisions were made. And I would say, uh with one of them. We. Are, we did uh invite that candidate in um based on a slight relaxation of, of those. Those requirements, yeah. But I, you know, I think part of the process um includes some without redoing the description entirely. Um, you know, we, there's some flexibility that I certainly go into the process with. You know. If it's the right person, it's the right person, but the guidelines are there for a reason too, um so, so there's, you know, there's a. I don't know if that kind of addresses, addresses the, the, the issue that you're thinking about or not, but.
No, it didn't answer my question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure, you know, and, and the person who was last in this position. Di- didn't have a library degree, uh but she did the job very well, um so just, you know, that specific one. Bullet point requirement, um you know, of a, of a degree, i- it's, it, it's helpful. Um but if someone's the right person, it's also, you know. I, I certainly have experience and knowledge that it's, it's not the end of the world, uh so. Annual report time too, um working on that, it's due February eleventh, get that done. Programs, uh currently a mixture of in-person and virtual programs, there is a Zoom program next week. Uh it's already got, as of earlier this week, thirty-seven registrants. Gardens of Cornwall and Devon, I believe, um Jana Milbacher will be presenting some of her photography and, and some stories. Uh she has presented here before and has a, a nice following, so um some, some good, good, hopefully, good attendance there. Um and, and take-home kits still. Very popular uh in the teen and children's area especially. So are continuing in that stuff. We did have um our holder of the two DVR decks for our security cameras needed a hard drive replaced. Um, it was just cycling through uh booting and then rebooting and, and never getting. Um, it was just cycling through uh booting and then rebooting and and never getting started. So that got replaced. Uh DPW did pay for that building maintenance. And Millennium Alarm did the work. Uh, we did install the the two early uh literacy stations. And we've seen some use there, and the beam system continues to be very popular. So uh, I think it was this past Monday, uh was the first day of uh masks being required uh in town buildings. And uh so we've got signage up and uh no real pushback on that uh here at the library. So uh, that's good. Uh, staff certainly um voiced some support for it. And uh yeah, so there's, there's my report. The last P O uh two other things. The town caucus will be March fourteenth. Um, so the two of our trustees who are up, um, that's your day. Uh, Kathy Town Clerk, uh last I heard, she's working on a calendar, so that should be posted soon too. Um, as and I I assume that will include what you need to do to get or what paperwork you need to get done this year, what the requirements are there. I will keep my ear out. Um, I don't don't know, Michael Ray, if you have any additional details since Kathy communicated to me or not, but March fourteenth, your day for town caucus.
You're who? Who are the two that are up this year?
I believe it's Donna and Dick.
Oh, really? Both of those, huh?
Yep.
I was thinking I had another year.
And Laura, you're next year?
No, I was last year.
Last year, last year. Okay.
Yeah.
Good. Great. Time flies.
It does.
All right, so
Yeah.
Um, the the only other thing before we go to the next agenda item, I did want to respond to my evaluation. Um, and I think there uh there's a lot in there, um, but you know, the contract um in particular uh is incredibly generous. And, you know, I don't think I can uh adequately express my gratitude. Feeling, feeling your support, uh the the board's support for for me and the work that that we've been doing at the library is that it feels really good. Um, I think Harry described it as feeling at home here at the library, feeling like I have a home here at the library. And certainly, um, if he didn't say that, uh, I think that's an appropriate description. Um, it it, you to the that you've offered me three years on a contract, um, i- is really meaningful. Um, you know, I I certainly don't have any plans to go anywhere. I I have high hopes for for what we'll accomplish at the library. Also knowing that, uh, you know, one of the things that that I I said back to Harry when we were talking about it initially too um was that I'm glad that annual evaluations are included in that. Um, you know, we we've got the the trustee handbook that we're going to go over. And and I think from the chapter that that we were going to look at, uh, it's reiterated evaluation is really important. And and hearing the constructive feedback from you guys um is really, really helpful for me in in doing my job, gives me a better understanding of, you know, how, what you you all feel are priorities. Um, you know, each of you is an individual, so I I know there there are some some differences, uh, but it's it's understanding those priorities in a more um uh in a in a very structured way, I think it is is great. It's helpful um in focusing my effort. Um, and I am very excited for for what we're going to do over the next couple of years. You know, I think the new goals are right up uh right up uh almost line to line what I I would have suggested as the things we should be working on as well. So um, you know, I think it's, we, our priorities uh as a group, I think, are very closely aligned, even though we each have slight slightly different, um, you know, um, orderings perhaps. Um, but I'm I'm excited to work uh on it, and I am incredibly grateful to you guys. So thank you. And I I've gone on for quite a while, so I'll 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 leave it at that. Thank you. And 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 I am excited and very grateful. Harry?
Yeah, I'd just like to add um to that, to all the trustees. Um, thank you all very much for uh your participation in creating the evaluation. As Muir indicated, there was confusion about the contract and and including when the old contract ended and the new contract should begin. And the monies that we wanted to give Muir and I, from dealing with um town manager and also HR of the town, I think it was very helpful that we had a detailed evaluation uh that that uh they could look at and get a feeling for how much we value Muir and and really, I guess, how serious the trustees are in terms of trying to run a good ship. Um, because they didn't give me any objection to either the contract or the money. And I think the evaluation was a big part of the justification for that. So um kudos to everybody for uh getting that done when we got it done and as well as we got it done. So thank you. Muir, are you done?
I'm done with my my report. Um, I think the next item is our trustee handbook.
Yep.
Do we want to go over that? Let's um pull this up here. Put it up on my screen for you guys so you can follow along. Chapter six is personnel, which talks about hiring a library director. Went through this process three years ago. The three years already? Yeah, just about, almost exactly. So I won't go too much into, you know, the process description or the job description. I think we've, we're in a pretty good spot. Um, search process was next, interviewing, um orienting. And I think one of the real benefits of the process that we experienced, um, when I came on board was that I had I had been here for a little while and and, you know, my predecessor had positioned uh me in a in a place where I learned a lot um before I even knew she was retiring. So um, you know, that orientation period had started probably long before. And, you know, it's really a reflection, I thought, of my desire to learn as much as I could about libraries in general and 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 Lunenburg specifically, but um, you know, that helped a lot. Orientation for for a dirt, a director who's new to uh a community is is very different. And uh can can kind of slow things down, but you know, the next thing that the chapter talks about is evaluating. Um, and, you know, we're considering changing the evaluation. Uh, we've done a little bit of research, um, gathered some some evaluations for the subcommittee to look at. Um, there are more resources that uh are available uh at the American Library Association and the MBLC websites. Briefly talk about removing a director. Basically, uh, it describes a process. It's very similar to the uh objection to library materials process where there's uh, you know, less formal discussion that that starts things before the full board needs to make a decision. Um, hopefully, we'll never need that. But it, it's described here. Yeah, and then the 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 rest of it is um about trustee and staff relations, which sometimes uh can be a bit sticky. Uh, but I think we've got a a great, great group, two great groups really that involved here in Lunenburg. And have for quite a while. Um, we respect each other and yeah, we we also understand the lines of communication well. And I think uh, you know, there's a little bit about volunteers too, but oftentimes with our volunteers really are are mostly the friends of the library. Um, and we've got a great relationship with them. Um, so I think that was a nice quick review of chapter six. Um, did anybody have questions uh that came up for you? Nope. All right. Let's do chapter seven next time. All right, so bylaws. I believe the assignment was to come up with a list of things you guys wanted included, and I would revise the document as necessary. Yeah, Harry?
Um, I I just wa- uh in the friends meeting.
Yeah.
I think, and I think this is a conversation that Dick had. It may be that the old bylaws are findable. Uh, Dick, do you know the answer to that?
My answer would be no. I I had actually gone, I'd actually gone around with uh with Jean. Prior to that, Jean is the is one of the former board chairs uh kept voluminous notebooks. And uh I had approached her before, as well as Kathy Herrick, regarding the fact that in ancient of days memory, uh, and and I don't, boy, I don't even know how long ago my first go around on the board was, that we had bylaws. But uh I'm sure that they are, if they exist at all, are covered in cobwebs, maybe in mold in the bottom of the town hall somewhere. Uh, it, there's nothing, nothing current, certainly.
But did did Jean was gonna look, did she circle back?
No. No, she did not. But we, we, we've, we've been here before. She looked before. And and so that that was why I was not, you know, I was not expecting actually to hear back from her. And I think that uh at this point in time, uh, we will get we we be much better off going on, uh, going onward and and creating a, you know, a a current set. Uh, for example, there there was no provision, I'm sure, that I don't think there was any provision in our former bylaws for vice chair. Uh, and, you know, the the times of meetings, et cetera, all of those, all of the sort of odds and ends. Uh, but it's just, I think it's just a good idea to have one and have it written down somewhere uh without necessarily going into the the depth that some of the the uh sample bylaws go to. Uh, but, you know, just a, just something, something nice and simple that says, you know, we had a Lunenburg Public Library Board of Trustees, et cetera, et cetera. We meet on the the Thursdays, there will be a, you know, a this, that, the other thing, and there will be these subcommittees. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Muir, I interrupted you. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Not a problem.
Here, I'm gonna interrupt you too. Sorry. Um, I I'm going to uh, I'm just gonna um probably um drop the meeting for just a couple of minutes because I'm going to a I'll I'll pop back on once I get um back into cell range.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good.
Muir, do we lose you?
Um, yeah, so what I had suggested um last meeting was that we work from the the fair memorial library's bylaws. Which is, you know, the Lancaster Public Library um next door to the south. Um, because theirs was the most uh extensive. And so um, the other suggestion, um, I I don't remember who suggested it, was that you all make lists of things that you uh thought would be most important uh to include in the bylaws. Um, and then we could combine the the two uh and come up with a proposed set of bylaws uh that we can review uh when appropriate. So I don't know how how we'd like to proceed at this point. We we could go through the bylaws document and uh add, uh, or we could combine all of our lists and uh someone take point and come up with a draft. I'm open. Anybody have thoughts? You guys have um suggestions, uh changes, revisions, additions, subtractions?
Before I drop completely, would this fall under the policies of any of this?
Yeah, I I I would say that it it's an appropriate document that the policies said committee could work on, yes. And that subcommittee is Dick, Maya, Kate, and Bob are the policy subcommittee.
But everyone talking once. Hey. What it it is one of those things, I I think that probably it it would be, would be best done that way, sort of informally. Uh, I don't know, I I'm I'm gonna, I'm gonna admit to to not having done my homework. In in terms of of looking at that, but I think that that might be if the the three of us made a point to look at it quickly within the next you know, couple of weeks and maybe then, I mean, again, if if we, if we meet formally as a as a subcommittee of three to do this, that's something that we would probably have to do somehow by Zoom or whatever and and do it in person or do it individually. And then just come to the board next, next meeting with it uh as three individual members of the policy committee. Any thoughts, Kate? Yeah. Not hearing you, Kate.
Now, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, um, just speaking for myself, I'd be fine meeting with other members. And I would prefer that to doing it alone, I think, kind of collaborating and jamming would be um more expedient and useful, but that's my own personal.
Yeah, I'd be fine with that too. Um, your is the the um the fair bylaws document, is that available somewhere?
It it is in last month's meeting folder. There's a subfolder for bylaw sample. I made a copy that I've renamed Draft LPL.
Okay, all right.
FY twenty twenty-two bylaws.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's there, and there's a separate document to work from.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, yeah, I have to admit uh with Dick, I didn't do my homework either.
Make it a threesome.
Okay.
So, yeah, I'd be fine with uh meeting with the three of us sometime.
Okay.
So we could just
Why don't, why don't we uh, why don't we agree to over the next week or so, take a look at it ourselves? And then we'll, we'll, we'll convene and see whether we need to, you know, actually get together, you know, in person, even with with masks on and socially distanced rather than trying to do it by Zoom. Because again, if we do that, we we do need to, we do need to post it as a, as a public meeting.
Yeah, I'd be fine coming to the library. A meeting in one of the rooms at the library.
Yep, should be available.
Okay, can certainly find a time for you guys.
Yeah.
Okay.
So. We're we're now up to the friend update. Um, Dick, you want to get the friends update?
Well, the only thing I have really to remember is that it was one of the shortest friends meetings on record. You know, pretty much, you know, status, status quo, looking at, you know, fundraising things and I I think the. You know, indoor golf thing is pretty much the the whatever. Connection we had to the skate park doesn't seem to be. Very much fruit at the moment. Obviously, the. The pop up book sales and all those things continue to to do very well. The cookbooks were a great success. I don't know, what am I missing, Muir?
Um, I think we're holding off until February for donations so that. Those volunteers who are sorting can kind of catch up and and regroup, move forward. Yeah, but I think that 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 they didn't talk about much more. It was a very, very short meeting. Yeah.
Okay. We're near the end of the agenda. Are there any? Board comments?
Well, we still, we still have the, we still have the the caucus and. Things to go over.
I'm sorry, I thought that you did that.
Well, but it's on the agenda as a separate thing, and I think. Okay, I need to be sure that. Who who are the who are the people that are that need to be? Again, it's a matter of I I we're gonna do this, what if they'll do the have to do the caucus in person? I don't remember last year.
I neither.
It was in person last year.
Yeah, and I I think I I think I actually went and did the nominations. So it's myself and.
Donna, I believe it's Donna.
Honor are up this year.
Yep. So we need somebody to go and make nominations for you guys.
Well, is Donna, are you are you going to, are you going to allow yourself to be nominated and roped in for another three year term? That's a yes? I.
Yeah. I had to go plug in my computer because it was dying. But yes.
I I have, I have to tell you, I. Over the last couple of months have been pondering. Since this is like, I think my, the end of my third term. And I have to say in consultation with my wife, et cetera. And looking at at my life in general, that this is being on this board is one of the highlights. I've been on the board. I think probably. Nobody's been here longer. Looking, looking at the faces on Zoom, I mean, I would not have, I would not have thought, you know. Couple of terms ago, wow, we're gonna be meeting, we're gonna be looking at the computer screen, you know, but it has been. It's been a a good time, I think. I like Muir's comment about the former director Martha. Sort of seeing something in Muir when she hired him. And doing, you know, without orienting him or making any. Assumptions or presumptions that he definitely was director material, which has certainly proved true. And looking at all the options and looking at the people that I'm serving with, after consultation, I decided. Yeah, I'll run again because this really is an exceptional group. Of of people to work with and it it's just, it's 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 a pleasure. Even if we have to meet like this, so I will, I I would be happy to attend the. Being double vaccinated and boosted, attend the. The caucus and and put Donna's and my names into. Uh, consideration, so.
Yeah.
That's a long way of saying, yeah, might as well do it another time.
That's great.
Yeah, we can do our tandem thing, Dick, where you vote, you nominate me and I'm gonna nominate you, just like last time.
Sounds like a plan.
I I'll make you anything you want. Thank you.
So, thank you both.
Donna. Great.
That would go on to comments.
Um, are there any board comments? Yes, we have.
I, it's not really a comment, it's something that I have been thinking about and wondered with the Fridays. Did you say half days, Muir, that you're shooting for?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think a full, yeah.
Okay. If you were, if you were doing a half day and if it was gonna be the afternoon evening half day, which it probably wouldn't be. Originally, when we had the Fridays on, my comment was just that I am a huge, huge fan of. Food trucks and what they do for any event and having gone through a couple of COVID summers and places where they. Had food trucks of the area coming in on certain days. It was such a way to build outside community, it was such a way to, people love food. And the idea of having a food truck in the parking lot on a Friday when we are celebrating that we are now opening Fridays. We bring in tons of new people and it's.
Cool.
It's a, there it is. I mean, I don't know, it just was a thought I had, like, how do we approach these Fridays? We talked about advertising, we've talked about visibility. It's, I guess every job I've ever had has had some advertising component. How do you get people's attention? What makes it real? I I. Think about food trucks.
Love it. I mean. Our. Summer reading kickoff last year was had great turnout. And food was involved.
I don't know how many different vendors in this area. I know in an area, maybe we were that they had some wonderful vendors and you don't do anything, they come and do it.
Yeah, I. I love it.
So.
I'm on board. I'll figure out what we need to do to make it happen.
I'll help. I love my food.
Yeah, make sure you talk to Andrea with the Board of Health.
Okay. It's just an idea, not happening necessarily, just an idea, Michael Ray.
We got, we got some time to work on it, so.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah. That'd be fun. Cool.
Are there any other board comments? Okay. Are there any public comments? So it is eight twenty seven. Mr. Motion, could we please have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Okay, so we're gonna do a roll call vote, Laura.
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Maya?
I can't vote, I don't know what we're voting on.
We're voting on adjournment.
Oh, my gosh.
Just in time, Maya.
Sorry, that was longer than anticipated.
How did you know when we were just about to finish?
I, totally intentional.
Um, so thank you all for participating as always, really a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you.